I'd like to call to order the meeting of Monday, August the 10th. The clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Amos.
President.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of July 13th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there any additions, deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have two presentations tonight. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Number one is the Beautification Commission will recognize the 2015 Yard of the Year recipients.
Just want to come to the podium, whoever's in charge, and it's all yours.
Hello, I'm Carolyn McNeil, the Chair of the Beautification Commission for this year, and I often call it B.C., Beautification Commission, so if I slip up, you'll know what I'm talking about. We want to thank Mayor Rep. and City Council for this opportunity to give recognition to our city's talented gardeners. As you may be aware, the Port Huron City Council created a 21-member volunteer beautification commission back on October 28th, 1985. Over the years, the number of board members has been reduced, and it's now a nine-member board. We are excited to note that this year marks the 31st year since the creation of the Beautification Commission. Our mission is to enhance and maintain the natural beauty of our city and to create and foster citizen pride by developing programs, projects, and annual events. The City Council annually appropriates money to assist the Beautification Commission with purchasing flowers and to help us sponsor both the Yard of the Year contest as well as the Tree Recognition Program. We truly appreciate this allotment of funds. At this time, I'd like to introduce Beautification Commission members who are in attendance tonight. If they will please stand while I read their names. Diane Horn. Sally Jett. Donna Kelly. Laura Lutrell. Kathleen Rosek. Stephanie Romales. And life members, which are members who have served for 10 years or more, are Mary Jo Edson. Kathy Holt. Evelyn Rogers. And myself, Carolyn McNeil. Did I miss anybody? I don't think so. Okay. And we thank all of you for the beautification. Oh, I should have done one more thing. We also have volunteers who just help us. They aren't actually members, but they often come. And we have Ashley Cox is here tonight. Stand up. And she's been a tremendous help and took over one of our beds that we didn't know who on earth was going to take care of it, and none of us wanted to. Add to our loads, so she was wonderful. Oh, spilling the beans now. Okay, and we have a couple other ladies, Rose Cota and Julie Harrison and Nicole Hutchison that also help. And Nicole has become a member. We also appreciate community service workers who help us on big projects. They are just a tremendous, tremendous help. The Beautification Commission currently maintains approximately 25 flower beds located throughout our city. You'll see them along Pine Grove Avenue, in Pine Grove Park, on the riverside of the road that goes through the park, along Electric Street at the south end of town, plus Lincoln Park that's at the south end of the park, of the park, or of the city. Weddings take place at both Lincoln Park and Pine Grove Park because not only of the river view, but also because of the beautiful grounds. Members and volunteers prepare, plant, and maintain these flower beds each season and every season, and for many of us, it's many years. We always need and welcome volunteers. Anybody can learn on the job. They don't have to have any specific knowledge. This is a plea right now that anybody who would like to join or like to just be a volunteer, call the city clerk's office and they'll give you the information, and we would love to have you join us. Didn't think I'd be through that fast. Okay. Let me tell you also about the Tree Recognition Program we sponsor whereby individuals can have a tree planted on city property in memory of a loved one or a dear friend, or to honor or recognize a person. Again, if you were interested in finding out more about that, call the city clerk's office and they'll direct you to the right person. I should also say that we just so appreciate the city clerk's help and Kelsey's help. We just can't say enough for all the help that you have given us this year and last year, and I'm sure many years before, but I'm much more aware of it myself, and I think our committee here's really been very appreciative of all of your help. Finally, we're here tonight for our annual Yard of the Year contest. At this time, I would like to have Stephanie Romales and Sally Jett, the co-chairs of this program, come up and present awards.
This year marks 28 years for the Beautification Commission's annual Yard of the Year contest.
It was started in 1988, and the object of this contest was to encourage people and businesses to beautify the property that we live around.
Properties are judged by master gardeners who look for very specific things like design, overall appearance, neatness, and plant material.
The judges are impartial and good at what they do because of their background. They follow a point system, and they judge only the front of their properties. Addresses are given to the judges without knowing who lives at those addresses.
The city is divided into three districts. The North District, which comprises the northern city limits to the Blue Water Bridge, I-94. The Central District, Blue Water Bridge, I-94, south to Griswold Street. South District, Griswold Street, to the southern city limits.
Since 1988, there have been a total of 579 awards that have been given out since the inception of this contest, with 349 different residential and 230 commercial properties being recognized.
This year, a total of 75 nominations were received in the city clerk's office.
Tonight, the residential winners will receive the coveted wooden yellow tulip, and the commercial winners will be presented with a plaque.
Repeat winners will either receive a leaf to add to the stem of their previously-received tulip, or a date plate for their plaque in the case of a business or nonprofit.
At this time, we'd like to announce the winners and ask if an individual or their representative is here tonight, that they come forward as they're called to accept their award. In the front, you will also see pictures of each of the businesses or houses that have received this award.
The first award from the south area of town residential goes to Nancy Sampson at 2013 Mini Street. Accepting for Nancy is Ricky Sampson. The second recipient in the south area, Roger and Donna Taylor, at 2879 Electric Avenue. The third residence from the south area. The third residence from the south area belongs to Juan and Victoria Ubanas, at 1533 Moving to the central area, the first residence is that of Joseph and Brenda DeBel, at 1711 Court Street.
I don't want to cheat anybody out of their tulips, so.
Thank you so much. The second residence from the central area is the residence of Kenton Mackey, at 2003 Stone Street. And I have to say, I've driven by this on numerous occasions and thought, what a beautiful The final recipient from the central area is Louise Werner, from 1516 LaPierre Avenue. In the north area, the residence of Chris Cantwell, 2716 Elmwood Court, or Elmwood The second residence is that of Rick and Kathy Kraus, at 323 LaSalle Boulevard, in And the final recipient of the residential awards, the third in the north area, Derek Under the commercial and nonprofit, the first recipient is the arbiters of St. Clair Apartments, at 3201 Military Street.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you do all of this?
Yes.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second, under the commercial and nonprofit, is First United Methodist Church, 828 LaPierre And the final recipient is the Holland Dental Center, at 1978 Holland Avenue. Most years, we've had an award for the Steve Revnick plaque. Sometimes, there have been a few years that it has not been awarded. It's given to the individual or group that has made an exceptional contribution to the city. This year, the award goes to Henry Hudson. Mr. Hudson plants flowers along the boulevard on LaPierre Avenue between 14th and 15th Streets. We thank Mr. Hudson for his hard work, his time, and his dedication that has helped to beautify Port Huron.
Sally, Mr. Hudson did come. He's right behind you.
Oh, thank you so much.
We would like to thank the judges, the photographer, Ron Romales, who took the photos, the clerk's office again for all the clerical assistance, and of course, City Council for giving us this opportunity to show our appreciation to the citizens of Port Huron for making this a better city for us.
As a reminder, I echo Carolyn's words. The Beautification Commission is always seeking volunteers. We can always use the help, the time, the muscle to contact the city clerk's office. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Well, thank you to all of you who serve on the Beautification Commission. You're to be commended for all that you do for our community, so thank you back. We'll move on to our second presentation.
Presentation number two is by Tim McClory, Risk Management Michigan, which is from Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tim McClory from the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. We are your property and liability insurance coverage carriers for the City of Port Huron. I want to thank you for making the decision to join the MMRMA so many years ago. It's certainly benefited, I think, the MMRMA to have City of Port Huron as one of our members, but I think it's benefited the City of Port Huron as well. I want to start out by just giving you a little brief background of what the MMRMA really is. MMRMA is not an insurance company. We're a nonprofit group of governmental units who pool together for insurance purposes under Public Act 138. We were born back in 1980, 1979, when the commercial insurance industry bailed on governmental entities, giving them two weeks, 30 days, 60 days to find coverage someplace else. That's how we were born. Ever since then, we pride ourselves on our proactive risk management, and we pride ourselves on our information sharing amongst the membership. Somebody in Muskegon might be doing something completely unique that could change the landscape of a house where backups are detected, or whatever. We have a bunch of different advisory committees made up of people just like yourselves that share this information. We develop model policies, we develop a lot of risk management tools, and we make them available to the membership. It's all about sharing information and being proactive with risk management. The MMRMA really wants to partner with our members as far as risk management projects go. We developed a program called the Risk Avoidance Program, which you guys have taken advantage of. I have a list of some of the things that you've taken advantage of since inception of that program, and you guys have benefited to the tune of $93,169 going towards projects that will help reduce your losses and help reduce the frequency of anything you guys get sued over. So I commend you for that, because it's quite an extensive list that I have here. I highly encourage all department heads to go onto our website, www.mmmrma.org, and look at the Risk Services and look at the Risk Avoidance Program. On there, you'll see a list of standard grants. You may have something in your budget right now that we'll help you pay for. It's never fully funded, but we partner with you at 50%, and we make these funds available. A lot of things, as you can imagine, are law enforcement related, since that's probably one of your biggest exposures to liability. But I mean, stops sticks, NCAR cams, lapel cams, all kinds of things, law enforcement related, that we'll help you pay for. In addition to that, back in 2006, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority developed what is known as a net asset distribution program. And this net asset distribution program, because you guys are members, okay, you're not just a policyholder, okay? We're a nonprofit organization, okay? So when there's money to be had, like an insurance company, they'll send it out to build a new building, or they'll send it out in a dividend check to their stockholders. Well, you guys, as a member of the MMRMA, are stockholders. You guys are the owners of the program. So when there's money to be had, we give money back to our members. This year, the MMRMA declared the largest distribution ever, with actual monies going back to our members of over $45.1 million, back to the membership. You see our net asset distribution in other ways as well, like we pay all your MCCA charges on all your vehicles, we supply you with cyber liability coverage, and the RAP program that I talked about, that's also funded by our excess net assets. Since 2006, you guys have benefited to the tune of $2.5 million given back to City of Port Huron. This year, I'm happy to present a check to Mayor Rep., if she would join me. I have a check here, which is very impressive. This is probably your, this is easily, yeah, this is easily your largest check yet. I have a check here in the amount of $566,325 made payable to City of Port Huron.
Oh, it's not to me.
Congratulations. And I just want to make this presentation, I want to congratulate the board on being a member of the MMRMA, and we look forward to continued years of partnerships.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you very much. With that, I'll open it up to any questions, if anybody has any questions. If not, I will let you proceed with the business of the evening.
Do you have any more checks?
Not with me, but next time I do, I'm happy to bring them to you.
Is there anyone on council who has any questions?
Matt.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I guess what's the difference between you and an insurance company, that if we were to bid out insurance, what would be the difference? What do you cover that they wouldn't, or what do they cover that you wouldn't?
Well, that's kind of a broad question. I'm not a, I don't know what other companies' policies are. I'm not allowed to make comparisons because I just don't know their product. I know our product, and our product is specifically designed for Michigan governmental entities, and it's specifically designed by Michigan governmental entities. Our Board of Directors is at the top of our flow chart, again, made up of people just like you. So we're member-driven, okay? We're not in it to make a profit, we're not in it to appease shareholders. That's a difference right there. Most insurance companies are for-profit, we're not. We only deal in governmental entities. Our coverage document is unique in that in the commercial market, you're going to see things like police professional liability policies, Arizona missions on the board. You'll see things, general liability, auto liability, employment practices liability. You'll see all kinds of different liability policies that the commercial insurance industry gives separate policies for. MMRMA covers all that under one coverage document. Very user-friendly and designed. It's basically an all-risk document unless it's specifically excluded, and our exclusions are limited. Because I like to refer to it as the wish list for governmental entity insurance, because if you were a governmental entity, what would you wish for yourself as far as coverage goes?
Well, I guess I ask that because you give us a check for $500 and some thousand dollars. That kind of tells me that we overpaid somewhere down the line if you're giving money back to us.
And Councilman Lewandowski has a natural reaction to think that, but you have to look at it from our standpoint. We're going out of our way, we're giving you money not to have losses. We're collecting a fair premium, there's no question about it. Are we the lowest guy on the block? Maybe, maybe we are, maybe we're not. Sometimes we are, sometimes we're not, when it comes to actual premium. But what happens to that premium after we take it in is the difference between us and a commercial market. You take a look at, if we collect a premium from the City of Port Huron, and we're doing our job, and you're doing your job, and embracing us as a risk management partner, you're not having losses. That money's still there. We're able to create incredible investment income when we're not having losses, and we have good claim experience. We're not paying money out, so the money is there. So the more money that sits there, the more money you're going to get in investment income, and the more money the membership's going to get back.
The same way it works in an insurance company, if I'm not having losses, then I'm not paying such a high premium either. Wouldn't that be the case?
Yeah, that may or may not be the case. I'm not really sure, but I don't know that the, that commercial insurance carriers, at least I know our competition, doesn't have a program like this where we're giving back money back to the membership.
And I understand that, but I guess I ask the question because we haven't, when was the last time we bid out our insurance? I've been on the City Council since 2007, and we've never bid out insurance to see if you're actually competitive to other insurance companies. That's why, say, when we lost our fire truck, do you guys, did you cover that?
I don't have any information on that, but if you guys have your, if it was covered under the MMRMA, we have true replacement costs, yes we would.
And that's what I'm having a hard time getting an answer to, is what exactly do you cover? I have yet to get a solid answer as to what you cover and what you don't.
We cover all your property and liability, your police cars, your fire, buildings.
Like you said, that's a broad answer. That's why I'm trying to figure out. I asked our city manager to get us something, he said you would present that to us tonight. It shows me exactly what kind of coverage we're getting from the MMRMA.
Well, I was here to make a presentation, but certainly I'm happy to give you a coverage overview. I can certainly email it to all council, and so you can look at the coverages and see exactly what you're covered for. Our coverage overview is extremely broad. We have extremely broad limits that have been negotiated on behalf of our entire membership. Those coverages, they go through everything. We cover you for terrorism, we cover you for general liability, we cover you for property in the open, we cover you for real property, personal property. We cover you for cyber liability, which is a new coverage that we provide our members at no additional cost, because we know that's an emerging exposure, and it's not a question of if, it's a question of when these things start happening. And we've always been proactive in providing our members with the latest coverage. So when it comes to answering your question of what we cover you for, we cover you for most everything that you do on property and liability. There's not much that we don't cover when it comes to liability. So I will be happy to get you a coverage overview. I don't have them with me, but I can certainly email it to you. If you'd like, I could give you my card, and you can send me an email, and I can respond in kind.
Yeah, I just, I mean, there's other government entities that don't use you guys, so that's why I'm curious as if we're actually getting a good deal. It's never been bid out since I've been on council, and I've been on here since 2007, and I don't know when the last time it was bid out. Nobody really seems to have a real clear answer as to when that happened.
And I don't have an answer to that question either. I don't know when the last time it was bid out.
How long have we been members?
You guys have been members since 1985.
That would probably be the last time. Real quick, if I could. I believe that our dividend this year was actually exceeded our actual premium cost.
It was over 100% of what you've paid out in premiums, so yes, you got, for all intents and purposes, you guys. so yes, you got, for all intents and purposes, you guys got more money back than you're being charged for the year, absolutely.
But it also means we've been paid more over the years than maybe we should have with another company, too. I mean, that's a possibility, that's why I called on council, or I'd ask council to put everything out.
No, that's certainly, you're right, and I'm happy to stand with you, and I'm happy to help you, help you do exactly that. I can make sure that you guys, if you want to go for bid, I'm happy to help you in the process, any way I can.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on council that hasn't? Yes, Councilmember Louise.
When you pass on that information, could you include, since we've been with you for so long?
Sure.
I'm surprised, other councils may not have asked this question, but obviously, they were content with having this as a coverage. Could you include what our cost has been, premiums, and any checks, reimbursements we've received?
Absolutely, I have that.
Just as a standard.
Sure, absolutely.
And also, how many municipalities would you say are covered by you?
Well, under the hundreds, you know, three, four, between three and four hundred governmental entities across the state of Michigan. We insure sixty-three of the eighty-five counties.
Sixty-three of the eighty-five?
Sixty-three of the eighty-five counties, including St. Clair County, so is also one of our members. It's, we go from large cities like Port Huron down to small little cable boards in the middle of Michigan, so we write all sizes, shapes and sizes in between, so.
Thank you.
If you're putting data together, I guess I would ask, then, I would assume some of the members that do not belong, actually don't even belong to the MML, would that, if you could kind of note that?
I can't comment on that.
No, but I meant, if you're noting statistics, if you could tell the ones that belong, all have to belong to the MML, correct, in order to get the coverage through MMRMA?
No, MMRMA is separate, autonomous.
Okay, that's not.
Ninety-nine point nine percent of our members are members of the Michigan Municipal League, because, because of the function that the league serves.
Yeah, I know they're separate, but I, yeah.
They have to get insurance through the MMRMA, so.
Yeah.
But that's not, that's not a requirement, in any way, shape or form, no.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I would just note, based on the timeline, I'd imagine that former city manager Jerry Bichard was one of the people who helped put this insurance company together back in eighty-eight, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, there was, there was a number of pioneering communities, Port Huron of which was one of them. You guys joined, probably, I'll call it the second wave. The first wave came between nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty-four, but we've been doing it, we've been doing it ever since, and our competitors are, you know, invitation is the sincerest form of flattery, they're, not only do they try to compete with us coverage-wise, but they also, they're trying to come up with programs like our net asset distribution, but it's close but no cigar, so.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the check.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation, and we'll look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah, thank you very much, I'll make sure that y'all get that information.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
We'll move on to public hearings, if the clerk would please read the first one.
Number one is to hear comments on the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, known as CAPER, for the two thousand and fourteen program year.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on public hearing number one? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number one closed. We'll move on to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council, please come forward with your name, and you do have four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Robert Beeden, I live at thirty-eight zero seven Catalpa Court, and I was here back on March the ninth, and I congratulated the board, trusted the council, on your blight program, and I continue to say that, as well as your plans for Lakeside Park and Beach, which is a real gem to our area. At that time, I asked some questions in regards to whether or not raw sewage was being pumped into the canal, and whether or not there was a plan to stop the raw sewage being pumped into Black River, and also if there was any plan or effort to work with places that are located north of us to keep the E. coli count from coming to our beaches, which, of course, affects Lakeside, and if you go there and you can't use the beach, that's one of the major draws. So, I had not heard back anything, and I don't ask for an answer here tonight, but I would request that someone contact me and let me know what has happened to the answers and investigation of those questions. Thank you very much.
Mr. Freed will respond to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening?
Good evening, I'm Rob Green, I'm from the city of Lakeport, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'd like to talk to you a little bit later in your agenda, there's a proposal for the Native American Memorial, I think it's number five on your agenda there. You know, when John asked me to come and speak in his behalf, I, one of the things that I thought about was what I would, you know, of course, say to you tonight, but I also asked myself, why would the city allow a memorial such as this to be put in, to be put in? And, you know, some of my thoughts were that we should probably proceed with this project in order to recognize the tribes that once lived in this area, and to celebrate the rich heritage of the North American peoples. This monument will honor the memory and the history of the many North American people that lived in our beautiful part of the world. Others that live here in the area, as well as those visiting, can be reminded of the full legacy of our, that our friends once abided here. So, we feel that it's important that we remember the past, embrace the present, and look to the future. This memorial will do these things, and I had hoped that we would have some more people to address each of those areas, but I know that we have Brian Gavin here that's going to address you a little bit more on that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm speaking tonight in support of my friend John Kennedy, in his effort to establish the Native American Memorial on the waterfront that Rob was talking about. But I'm also speaking as a Port Huron native who grew up on St. Clair Street behind the old pearless cement plant, so you may remember that, I don't know, maybe some of you don't. In the years since, I think Port Huron's done a wonderful job making great strides in redeveloping the waterfront, and with their historical projects, like the Lighthouse and the Lightship, the Edison Museum, and those things have begun to show us, I think, how we can use our past to begin to create a new future. And I believe John's plan for a Native American Memorial fits perfectly with that vision. You know, most of us don't know, I didn't know, that a lot of stuff happened here that was of very great historical importance. I didn't realize myself, until I was just looking it up, that the very first action of Chief Pontiac's War happened just about where we're standing right now. And that war went on in the late seventeen-sixties, I think, to spread throughout the whole eastern United States, or America at the time, North America. Three hundred and twenty years ago, Native American warriors from all over the upper Midwest joined with the French right here to organize a raid in their fight over who would control the fur trade. Three hundred years ago, the Chipewa drove the Iroquois out of Michigan in a battle that was swallowed right down, right at the Black River, right where a boat night is held today. A lot of this stuff is very important history, but it's history that's been neglected by historians and citizens us alike, but it's an important part of the American story, an important part of our story, that I think that we can really begin to recognize and sort of take advantage of here, on our own waterfront. I urge the council to get behind John's plan, then, not only as a way to grow public awareness, but also to further enhance our waterfront through the telling of all of that rich history that happened here. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council Reps. My name is Harry Dogstater, I am from the Oneida First Nations Community in Ontario, Canada, the home community of where John Kennedy is from, and I'm here in support of the effort that he's put forward. I was here at a previous council meeting and spoke to the issue, and just reiterating our support and concern, and the previous two speakers' support as well, that we are behind this effort to recognize First Nation communities' members that resided in this particular area of Port Huron, Michigan. I know that our, our community has had people in Port Huron, Detroit, Buffalo, and various other U.S. communities for employment and various things of that nature, so I think the recognition that John is putting an effort forward to appreciate those people that have helped build the communities over here. So, again, I'm just here on behalf of Oneida, we're approximately sixty-five miles kind of east of here, we have five thousand eight hundred community members, twenty-five hundred resident, and we're within the London District area of about eighteen thousand First Nation people, representing eight communities within that area. So, I know that we belong to the London District, and the chief from my community is going to be making a presentation to the London District Chiefs to try and gain their support as well, and get that eighteen thousand membership in support of John as well. So, again, congratulations to John on his efforts, and thank you for recognizing us this evening, and we'll be back. I'll go.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? Seeing no one else, I'll declare public comment closed, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Amos. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Mayor Rep, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'd like to remove number seven.
Number seven. Okay.
Mayor Rep, number six, please.
Okay. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. The items on the consent agenda that were adopted was receiving and filing a notice from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission on the transfer of ownership of a two thousand and fourteen Class C license with dance entertainment permit located at twenty-three twenty-six Connor Street to Clyde Moss and Dino Tatta. Also, there was a receive and file notification that the annual conflict of interest statements have been reviewed, and no discrepancies have been found. Confirming and approving single lot special assessments for fines, assessments and/or costs of removing blight lighting factors and/or causes of blight, as well as abatement of nuisances, confirming and approving single lot special assessments for the cost of sidewalk replacements in the right-of-way, approving the taxi cab licenses for the two thousand and fifteen sixteen licensing year, designating the voting delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention, and, under ordinances, second reading and enactment of an ordinance to amend Chapter Fifty-two zoning, Article Three, District Regulations, Division One, generally, Section Fifty-two dash one sixty-two map of the Port Huron Code of Ordnances. For the purpose of rezoning the property located at one-one-one-zero-Tenth Avenue from A-one Medium Density Multiple Family Residential District zoning to I Institutional District zoning district. That concludes what's on this consent agenda, and we will move to, from the city manager, number one.
Number one is accepting the bid from Murray Underground Systems Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and five dollars and thirty cents for the South Boulevard Water Main and Street Reconstruction Project from Electric Avenue to Thirty-first Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess my only question here is, is the name Murray Underground Systems is not a familiar name to this council member, and I just wondered what their, how their background is for this work that's much needed.
Do you want to speak to that?
I think they have.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Harris, your question is, some of the background for Murray Underground?
You know, are they recognized, like, say, they seem like they're a new contractor for city work and stuff, and I just...
My understanding is, yes, they are, they're new, they haven't done any work with the city in the past. I know of nothing that indicates that they are disqualified or unqualified to do this kind of work.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
As to answer Councilmember Harris's questions, I'm fairly familiar with them. They've done a lot of the subcontracting work on a lot of the projects around the city for, I don't know if it'd be PMR, I don't know the exact groups who they worked for, but they have done a lot of the subcontracting for them.
Thank you, any more discussion?
I will say, on my second day on the job, I got a phone call from a resident on South Street.
South Boulevard?
South Boulevard, that said, when is our road going to get done? I said, as soon as possible, so hopefully, North Boulevard will be done next year as well.
Mayor Rep, something they've been looking forward to, yes, Councilmember Ashford?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend my fellow council member down here, Harris, because he really persevered on, and also Allen, in trying to get some work done to the streets down there on South Boulevard, so this is certainly a great relief that this is going to happen. Yeah, all right.
There's no more discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, we'll move on to item two under the city manager.
Is accepting the bid from Goddard Coatings Sports Surfaces in the amount of sixty-one hundred dollars for the resurfacing of Knox Park Basketball Court.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
What is the timetable on this work to be done?
Mayor Rep, council, we just heard from the contractor today, and at the very latest, it's going to be September eighteenth. They got backed up on some work, so we're hoping by the end of August, but September eighteenth's the drop dead day, so.
And also, not with this, but certainly in the same ball court, is there any more projects that are planned for the Knoxville area?
Well, we took a walk there with, with Mr. Freed and Councilman Amos, and, actually, Mr. Watkins, right, Mr. Watson, and kind of took a look at the park, and some things that volunteers can do, and we're planning on putting in some new grills. I know Councilman Amos has been working hard, too, to get some donations for maybe painting the gazebo, and doing some other things, you know, that are kind of low-cost until we get more donations for the projects, but yes, we're looking at.
Okay, but nothing from a city council perspective, that, that...
Not this time.
On a capital basis, okay, thank you.
And Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
As Nancy said, I did walk through the park with them, and that has been a project of mine for a long time, working with the NAACP to adopt that park, and they've agreed to keep the park in maintenance, as well as we do improvements to that park, and knowing that the basketball court is in terrible shape, and the young people in that particular area are now having to come up to Palmer Park to even play basketball or do any recreation, so I think that getting that court done is very important for them as well.
Madam Mayor, we'll point out that we did install new mulch there. The playground is relatively, is one of the newer playground sets in the city. When we did our walk-through, it was our annual walk-through of parks, and, you know, someone had pulled out a portable grill, brought their own grill there. Now, they're bringing their own grill there, and we have grills that we can put out from storage, so just simple things like that we're trying to do, but that's why Nancy and I make a point to walk several parks throughout the seasons, too. Unless you personally go out there and shake the hands of the people who are at the park and get to know them, so it's something Nancy and I have been working on.
We really have been trying to go to a lot of parks, and just another shout-out to, every week, a group of volunteers have been going to different parks. You might not see, like, huge, like, monumental changes, but paint on swing sets and paints on gazebos, and, you know, so we're making changes in all the parks, so, and working together, I think, is the only way to get that done, so.
Yeah, well, thanks, Nancy, I'd certainly like to acknowledge the historical shallow Michigan Baptist Church who adopted that park at least fifteen years ago, and they had built the, before you, we got the, what do you call it, the thing that you shout out the scores or whatever, before we got all that equipment, they actually, volunteers from DTE built the shelter itself, so, you know, before you can go forward, you've got to recognize what happened before this happened, so I would like to publicly recognize them, and glad to see that we're moving ahead, you know, in this direction, to bring more improvements to Knoxville.
Any other comments or questions, yes, Councilmember?
You know, I'm glad to see that we kind of got this on the fast track, I guess the only thing that made me sound like sour grapes to some, but for the last number, five or six years, I've kind of chased down city department people and trying to get something down to the Court Street Pool area, the parking lot and things like that, and it's very difficult when you only get two shovels full of cold patch every two years in that facility, and I just think that, I, I just think that we have to do a better job of looking at everything and not just certain areas, so, and I won't forget about Court Street Pool.
That's good.
That's good.
Thank you, Nancy. Yeah, I think that's it. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to item three under the city manager.
Is accepting the bid from S.A. Torrello Demolition in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars for the demolition of the Lakeside Park restroom concession stand located at thirty-seven eighty-one Lakeside Drive.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there any discussion?
These, is this the grant money?
There's no other discussion. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item four.
Is accepting the bid from Superior Contracting Group LLC in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars for the Lakeside Park site improvements. And that would be the new restroom concession stand building.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos. Is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item five.
Is accepting the bid from Gornow Ford in the amount of eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars for three two thousand sixteen Ford Interceptor utility vehicles for use by the police department in accordance with the state of Michigan My Deal purchasing program.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz? Is there discussion?
Just one comment.
Councilmember Harris.
As much as I despise single-source bidding, I, I will probably be voting no on this because I really think that, I understand to deal with, purchasing with My Deal. But I still think that we have to recognize our local dealers when it comes to some of these products. And we've proven in the past that we've been able to do it. So, I'd be voting no.
So, any other comments?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Ashford?
Oh, I just was reminded by his comment. I remember the previous council members, it's not us not wanting to deal with them. But I believe the chief told us that it was, the ball was in their court. They gave them opportunity to become a part of My Deal. And they have refused to do so, or for whatever reason, I don't know. If that's, is that right?
We could have the chief address that because I believe he did come to the council meeting the last time we bought equipment and said that.
Yeah, he did say that. And that's what I had wrote in my notes here.
Sure. Let me comment on My Deal. My Deal is a, is a, basically a consortium run by the state. It allows all dealers to bid as a package for the bid process throughout the state. So, with each brand, GM, Chevrolet, Ford, Chrysler, they entertain multiple bids. And then whatever, they award the bids based upon a variety of different things, the packages and stuff, to different entities. And each one of these dealers has an opportunity to, to bid on that and be that dealer that's awarded that package. Generally, I think it's about two to three different dealers throughout the state, strategically placed throughout the state, generally are given a bid. Now, we always talk about, first of all, we always try to buy the lowest bid. And I do understand and try to buy local. And that's where I go to examine the product. I would love the ability to go back to, let's say, My Deal says a car is ten thousand dollars. Go back to the local bidder and say, My Deal says this car is ten thousand dollars. Are you willing to sell it to us for ten thousand dollars? But that perverts the bid process in its original form where they had the opportunity to, you know, bid the whole thing. They're just picking the low fruit off the hanging tree. So, it is a standardized bid process. They do get the opportunity to bid on all type of things. And it's awarded throughout the state. And then some of the larger counties run their own competitive bid process where we're also able to utilize those. Oakland, McComb, west side of the state does a competitive bid process. At times, I also look to see what's the better price. Because sometimes it's seasonally adjusted based upon the volume available. You might get a better price going through Oakland County's competitive bid process than you would My Deal. But in this case, My Deal is the lowest price that we found.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Chief, you seem to be a little bit more expensive than the Crown Vix. Do they come with all the lights and the cages in them already, since it's a specially-designed police car?
No, they're not in good eye. They are. And, and first of all, they don't make the Crown Vix anymore. But I think what you're talking about is probably that Taurus model.
Or the Taurus.
What I would call the Taurus. It looks the Taurus. And I bought, the last time around, over the last two years, I bought three of the Tauruses front-wheel drive. And then I bought one of these to compare and see how we want, we're doing. And what we found is that we're having a couple problems with the Tauruses. First of all, the sightlines are making it so difficult. First of all, we cram in so much equipment into the car. You're basically like a guy sitting in an airship. You're cramped in the car. But the sightlines don't allow the officers to see out the side windows and where the back trunk is at. Okay? That's one of the main things. The second thing is that we aren't able to fit people into the backseat. And a lot of our customers like to take a ride in the backseat of the car. I like to accommodate them when they want to take that ride. And I can fit the larger-sized customers much easier into that vehicle than I can the Taurus. And the last thing I try to think about is delivering service in the neighborhoods during inclement weather. I'm buying all-wheel-drive Tauruses instead of, excuse me, all-wheel-drive interceptors instead of buying the Tahos, all-wheel-drive pursuit rated. So I'm trying to get a little bit of each thing, but...
No, that's fine. I was just curious. It just seemed to, I didn't know.
It is a little bit more. But what we have to do is then we standardize the equipment inside. I'll be coming back to the council next couple of months on new computer equipment inside. Well, the councils then will all be standardized. Those generally, even though they're expensive, the first time, we hand them down two or three change holders. And I think you're aware of that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to resolutions. Number one.
Is authorizing fourteen payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris? Is there discussion? Vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item two.
Is approving the agreement with Row Professional Services Company for construction engineering services during construction of the splash pad, restroom concession building, sidewalk and other planned amenities for the Lakeside Park site improvements.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protem Archibald. Is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to item three.
Is approving the lease agreement with the Economic Development Alliance of St. Clair County to lease the south side office space on the fourth floor of the municipal office center.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz? I just wonder if maybe the city manager could just give us a little brief overview of this?
Yeah, absolutely. We will be partnering with the EDA. I'm pretty excited about this partnership. It will help us create a seamless, one-stop shopping, so to speak, for developers and business people who are looking to come and start a business, to develop a piece of property. You can now come meet with the Economic Development Alliance in our building. You can also meet with the planning department and the building department, all in one place. We all know that City Hall isn't fully, fully used to its capacity because of technology. As over the years, computers have allowed us to get rid of paper and, you know, three secretaries per person for filing. So with that additional square footage, it's very difficult to find, when you want to lease out part of your building, it's very difficult for us to find people to rent through our one nonprofit, because we don't pay taxes here. And two, that marriage well with our operations. And so this lease will bring in twenty-five thousand dollars of additional revenue to lease out unneeded space. We were able to consolidate the fire administration into other offices. And code enforcement was able to consolidate on third floor. This will also save the EDA money. They'll save significant dollars for their currently leased and allow the community college to take back some of the space they need for student development services. So it's kind of a win-win for everybody. But I'm pretty excited the fact that we will be a one-stop location now for the business community.
Does anyone on council have any questions? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item four.
Is accepting the bid from Fountain's Custom Interiors in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars for MLC carpet replacement in the lobby and conference room four oh eight to be paid for with revenues received from the leasing of the MLC fourth floor, south side office space.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'm going to be voting no on this one. EDA wants new carpet in their offices and in the conference room. And they're saving money by renting here. They can afford to pay for the carpet themselves. So, I'm voting no on this one.
Yes, Councilmember Harris, did you have something?
I was just going to comment, you know, here's a, here's a new bidder for those for some of the city projects and stuff. A longtime business, City of Port Huron. And I'm just glad to see somebody new submitting bids on some of the products that we're, we have here, so.
Any other comments?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Protem Archibald.
Just for clarification, this is not the EDA offices. This is the lobby and the conference room.
Right.
On the first floor.
The first floor lobby and the upstairs meeting room.
Correct. It's not their offices.
I requested the EDA, sorry if it's not their office, but I requested the...
Okay.
Just clarifying that it was...
Did you have something you wanted to add to that or not?
I could have, I thought you told me it was...
Yeah, it was, you know, the issue is, is this something that's been, needed to be done for quite some time. Our carpet in the lobby, there's actually, in a lot of it, there's the rubber showing now. We've just kind of cleaned it. It's original, I believe. How old is that carpet? You picked it out, Paul.
Well, thank you for the blame. I don't think that was credit. I was probably blaming...
Nineteen ninety-nine, I think?
It's been a long time.
We, it's actually the...
A long time.
It's impossible to clean now. There's nothing physically left to clean because it's so matted down. We, how many, on a daily basis, how many in and outs are in our building, chief?
Three hundred to three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred, three hundred and fifty people walk through that lobby. So it, it looks quite bad. And, you know, now that we're showcasing our, our community, this is where people come to showcase the community. And we want it to look nice. But in addition to that, it's becoming an operational issue. And it smells terrible.
Well, it is, it does not. It's definitely worn. Definitely worn. It's had a lot of use.
Just for clarification purposes, then, who's paying for the carpet in the, in their new offices then?
This is coming out of our funds.
They're not getting carpeting in their offices.
No, they're not.
That's why I'm asking, who's paying for that? Because I could have, when we took that tour out there the other day, I thought you said they were putting new carpet in there too. And that was part of this.
They were considering it. They were considering it, they still are considering it. If they do, it'll be their cost, per the lease. All improvements will be their cost, to their square footage of leased space.
I'll probably budge them.
Any other questions, comments, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, we'll move to item five.
Can I just make a statement real quick? I'm going to put this under from the managers in the minutes, though, and just make a notation that he handled it after the resolution. We wanted to keep these two together. Does anybody have any objections if I did it that way, just to make for continuity?
No, I don't, does anybody?
No, would you say that, yeah, I understand.
She's just moving where it's in the actual item. It's, it was put in here under from the city manager, it says.
Right, yeah.
And it's not a resolution, but they wanted to put it there so that it was in conjunction with the lease. So it actually will be in the correct place on the minutes.
Yeah, I did, I had noted that, knew it must have been a purpose. I said, I know, you never make a movie like that.
So it just will be moved to the proper location in the minutes.
Not a problem.
Yep.
Okay, number five is approving the agreement with Mr. John Kennedy to erect a monument approximately fifty feet south of the International Flag Plaza to honor and remember the past lives of the Indian people who at one time called this area home with all associated costs to be paid for through Mr. Kennedy's fundraising efforts.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second? Councilmember Harris, is there any discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, councilmember Ashford.
You know, I think it's always a plus for any, anyone to want to recognize their nationality and bring it forth, and this is a cultural thing for us as a city when people come here. And, you know, it's something about your roots that you don't want, that you can't dig up and you can't mess with, but we need to somehow keep it alive, and I think this is definitely a demonstration of keeping this alive. And I just applaud you in your efforts, Mr. Kennedy, to bring this forward, you know, on behalf of the race of the Indian people, and then have it available for all people to appreciate. So thank you so much.
Anybody else on council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to say, it's been a pleasure working with Mr. Kennedy throughout this process. You approached my office, gosh, almost a year ago, one of the first things when I first got here, and he really drove the whole thing and kept knocking on the door, and I think councilmember Ashford said it best, to move forward, sometimes you've got to look backward where you came from, in the history.
I do, too, because you and I both met with Mr. Kennedy, and I commend you on your diligence to see it come to fruition, because I know you were just at the starting stages back when we first met you, so congratulations. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item six.
Is approving the two thousand and fifteen request for local millage distribution from the St. Clair County Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, councilmember Harris.
I guess the only reason I took this off the, or asked to come off the consent agenda was the fact that the language that we put in this application and where we're spending the funds seems to just be repeated year after year, and it doesn't seem to follow the future of the grant. You know, the grant for this coming year is different than the grant from last year, but the language is still the same, and I just think it's something that, and I went over to the county rec department, and unfortunately for them, not too many of the people that receive these funds do a very good job either. But I just think that we could do a better job of showing where our funds are going and when we submit the document to them. So I will be voting yes, yes.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item seven.
Is approving the appointment of Patricia Merkel to the sister city commission with a term to expire April twelfth, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Yes. Mayor Rep, I just ask for this to be removed, just for some update. I know there's, this is a nine-member board now, is it? Nine-member board, the sister cities, and is there any update? Who is our sister city now?
Still Chickamaula.
Still? Oh, okay, see, that's what I didn't know, I guess I could have called you, but I just didn't know the update.
It's really up to, it's always been up to the commission to recommend somebody, and they do the research and way back when it started, because I was involved with it then, so I do remember.
I remember that, yeah.
Where is it? Guatemala. It's in Guatemala, and there have been visits, obviously, back and forth, I think, over the years. I don't know when the most recent one was, I think it's been a few years.
Right, and I noticed the great number of vacancies on that, and I would think it lost in steam and interest, and I just didn't want to just be, you know, passing by, so there's nothing we can do. It's really the commission's responsibility to infuse some life into that. Okay, thank you.
You can encourage people to get involved.
Yeah, I'm glad, Mrs., what's her name, Merkel? Is that pronounced right? Merkel, yeah, yeah.
And the city clerk has something she's going to add to it.
I do know that the community college has sort of taken over more of the interactions between the two communities.
Oh, okay.
And Scott Fernandez from the community college sits on the board, and they have had a renewed interest here just recently, and they've been trying to meet. They started out monthly, and now they're going to go to quarterly, because it is difficult for some of the members to come. And they are looking into, and I don't know how far along they are, and I don't want to mention the community yet, but they are looking at possibly coming to you and asking for another sister city to be brought on board.
Okay.
Totally different than this one.
Good, okay, that's good to hear, thank you.
You're welcome. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our agenda, I have a couple of announcements. The city offices will be closed on Monday, September seventh, in observance of Labor Day, and that sounds terrible to think that we're at the end of our summer. The next regular city council meeting will be September the fourteenth. Also, Little Caesar's Fall Challenge Hockey Tournament is going to be held September fourth through the sixth at McMoran Arena. And then I also would just like to remind people that we're now back to having Rockin' on the Rivers on Thursday night. So our first one was last Thursday, and there's another three Thursdays for that to happen, so make sure if you get a chance to go, because I know they've got some great entertainment. And of course, we just finished up our powerboat races, and there was some great entertainment there Friday night also. And so there's a lot of things that have been going on, and Blue Water Fest before that, as well as other, many things in our town, so I will certainly, did you want to add something?
No, no, I just want, I have two items that I'd like to bring before the council.
I was just going to say, anybody else on council has something, so go ahead.
Wait, did anybody else have anything?
Mayor Rep?
Mayor Rep?
Oh, boy. You go first. Councilmember Harris?
You know, we've had a nice little vacation here with a month off, and I think that, you know, wandering around some of the crowds and stuff, and, you know, it's kind of a touchy subject, but I think the chief realizes, and I talked to a couple of the police officers over the weekend, and Port Huron still is having a little trouble with the meth labs and the heroin and things like that. And I know one of the VIPs who happens to live in my neighborhood stopped me and mentioned some of the difficulty that he sees in the neighborhoods and things like that. And he brought up the instance of, we just acquired a house that was previously raided for meth, methamphetamines, and now as a city being owner, it's been raided again, and he's, and I guess as my comment is kind of a question, how do we stop the fire?
Can I comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to leave a false.
Nope, no.
I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, it's, it's.
Please go ahead.
Those new cars, I'll be able to fit more people in, though.
I'm going to go up and talk to Tom Woods tomorrow morning.
Thank you. That house, there's another story there. The city had taken possession of it, but we have to follow the law as well. Apparently, what the VIP is not aware is that we had to go through the eviction process of the people that were in there. And a lot of cases, we'll find that by the time a home gets to Kim and we coordinate, it may not be the owners are there, we may have squatters, we may have other people that move in, and we have to use the legal system in order to evict them and go through the process. The good thing is, is that we were able to get on that, it was an active meth lab, and able to evict them that way by taking them into custody and then getting the home have all that items removed, and then working with housing and planning development with Kim, we were able to get that house immediately boarded up, so we didn't allow anybody else. Otherwise, we've been stuck waiting for a court date to facilitate that. So it actually worked out to our advantage, we were able to close the house a little bit quicker. A lot of people don't understand, just because we're the city, we still have to go through that process. And at times, it takes, it takes a little bit of time.
And I think his questions were legitimate. He brought up twelve eighteen Pearl Street, which is, was recognized in the papers as one of our biggest drug busts ever, and he said that, you know, what's to prevent that, or who can prevent that from becoming another meth lab, so.
Tell him the chief candidate, I'm there all day long, feel free to call me.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the response, Mayor Protem Archibald.
I just wanted to remind everyone that Sunday, the sixteenth, is float down. And please be respectful of the residents and their yards when you're parking in front of their driveways. Make sure you don't block their driveway, you don't leave your trash. But most importantly, a reminder to heed the Coast Guard's advice in being responsible and aware of your surroundings and those you are with, and being very careful and very, very, very safe. It's a great time for everyone, but we do need to, in lieu of things that have happened in the past, make sure they don't happen in the future, and be, be safe, be careful, use common sense, and have a good time.
Thank you.
And I will be out there.
I know you will.
You'll be floating down.
I will, I will be floating down, yeah.
Good for you.
Councilmember Ashford.
All right, I just have two short things here, and I actually wrote it down, so I wouldn't get, lose my place here. You know, as an FYI, myself and my capacity as commissioner and representing the city of Port Huron on the transit board, and Linda Buckner, who serves as a chairperson of Blue Water Transportation, we attended the American Public Transportation Association, known as AFTA, on July the twenty-eighth through the twenty-first in Denver, Colorado. The conference brought together other policymakers, such as ourselves and staff, for the purpose of professional development sessions, and we did a lot of witnessing of best practices in governance and creating policy for public transportation systems. They had special outbreak sessions to fit the size of your transit system, and naturally, we are representative of the small system. There were several high points for me at this conference, but in particular, I was drawn to the conversation around how economic development is deeply influenced by the transit system, especially acknowledging the different modes of transportation. My thoughts quickly centered on our own upcoming transit center and seeing this as an opportunity, not a benefit, but an opportunity for possible economic growth for our downtown neighborhoods and Blue Water area. And I was also moved by the comments that were voiced about motor vehicles not being our enemy. There's, there needs to be a balance, according to the speaker, Mr. Washington, on how we continue to view the use of motor vehicles. There was a great dialogue around this topic, it was really huge, because we took a tour, you know, on the light rail, and we saw all the bike modes in Denver, because that's big and everything, and we just did a lot of networking as to how we could, at least I did on behalf of the transit center, like, what can we put in there? What can be prompt outside of that, you know, downtown Port Huron? What can really spin off from that, you know, and that's outside of the box? And I know Jim Wilson, our director, he does a good job, you know, with getting grants and all that. So we're just looking forward to, you know, kind of doing the best we can to make the most of that gem that we got that's going to be created over there and opened up in November of this year. So overall, it was a very insightful and informative conference from a local perspective and a national standpoint, and I did do a real deep dive report on certain things to be shared with SimCOG and also with the transit center of Blue Water. So it wasn't a junket by no means, it's just that, you know, nobody, I think, missed sessions. It just was that engaging. We were very engaged, because they had really great speakers, and the whole layout was just, just really beneficial. And my next subject matter is a follow-up from the previous council meeting held on July the, July thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, regarding the concerns with the fire department. I think my remarks on communication probably pushed some hot buttons here, but I made some remarks at that time that requested, that where I was requesting a consolatory plea referencing communication to the department head of the public service department. That, in short, may be some communication that needs to happen. That's what was supposed to have been taken out of content here. So also, what was in that same line of remarks was the word trust. On last week, I did make the time to accept a meeting invite with the city manager, the public service department, and a fire department representative. I was very appreciative to have heard and saw the numerous documentation on the efforts where the communication had taken place. But what was so mind-bowling for me in view of these efforts were still faced with, we were still faced with a storm of conversation that would lead one to believe we still need to communicate on a different diet. To communicate, we often miss it, even when we talk to each other. If you're not connecting, nothing is getting through, and it's nothing, and it's between two people, two parties. It's not just the city, it's the other persons that's involved here also. So I wasn't trying to say it was all one-sided, because it wasn't. So I still say that we need to still continue that same level of communication that you are doing, and hopefully, the difference would be that the connection would be there. And then it also was brought to my attention where, you know, my statement was kind of judged as, were you right or wrong? Well, I'm not looking for it to be right or wrong, sitting here as a council member. I'm just looking for the best way to bring the issue up front and to see how we can collectively work together to make something happen, to rectify that, to make it right for our citizens.